Over to Stephen.
Sounds great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight it is a pleasure to introduce you to a group of our youngest learners at SPS. We have with us three students who represent the first class to attend Campbell Early Childhood Those students are Mason Shevchuk and Maya and Malia Chester. And he'll stand right up here so the board can see you. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how great you are, okay? Stand right up here and you can face the board so they can see you, okay? And we'll get started.
Stand right over here.
That's great.
All right.
Ladies, he's coming. This is where your friends are.
So as you know, this year we were able to expand our program to serve an additional 200 four and five-year-olds. Mason, Maya, and Malia are among those who are benefiting from the learning experiences that are offered at Campbell. Because of this expansion, they will be better prepared when they enter kindergarten next year. So at this time, we invite their family members and any Campbell staff that are present to stand so that we may acknowledge their support.[80.14][80.14][applause] Okay, so are you ready? Whenever you're ready, we'd like for Mason, Maya, and Malia to face the flag and start the pledge whenever you're ready, okay?
[inaudible]
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 Nice job.
They did a great job. So we will continue with our honoring excellence this evening. We have more of our 25-year anniversaries to celebrate. Great job, you guys. Tonight, we have our final recognition of staff members who will celebrate their 25-year service anniversary during our 2018-19 school year. These four individuals are among the 15 employees celebrating this milestone. As I call their names, they will come forward and our board president, Mrs. Patterson, will present them with a commemorative lanyard to mark this important service anniversary. So we have Gisela Bullard is an administrative secretary at Craft Administrative Center, Todd Cox, a maintenance supervisor at General Services Center, Gail Eubanks, a librarian at Parkview High School, and Laura Hopper, a principal at York Elementary School. Thank you all and congratulations.[316.01][316.01][applause] So next up, we have our Hillcrest High School JROTC Raider Team. Putting their mental and physical strength and endurance to the test, 12 members of the Hillcrest High School JROTC Raider Team competed in the national championships in Georgia earlier this month, finishing 13th overall in a field of more than 50 teams. In its 23-year history, the Hillcrest JROTC program has never participated in a national-level competition, and this is only the second year Hillcrest has fielded a Raider Team. To compete, Raider Teams face rigorous outdoor challenges, including a one-rope event, 5K team run, physical team test, and the Raider Gauntlet, which is a military-style obstacle course. In addition to this outstanding national finish, the Raiders completed the regular season with a fifth-place overall ranking among 23 teams in one of the most competitive Raider competitions in the entire Midwest. Join us in congratulating the JROTC Raider Team Cadets Justin Gaunt, King Kai Wilberding, Cody Krim, Zachary Ames, Malik Young, Jeremiah Stewart, Santiago Martinez, Dominic Jones, Logan Flores, Joshua Landis, Noah Hefner, and Carter Nessberg, who are joined by their coaches Lieutenant Colonel Brendan McKeonan and First Sergeant David Dowell.
She's really wanting to say.
[inaudible]
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 Well done.
Impressive.
Well, now the time has come to highlight our Power of One Team recognition, which honors those who have demonstrated the powerful impact of teamwork and collaboration across our system. Each month, we choose a special Power of One Team story and we highlight it through video. Here is our November Power of One Team, the Early Childhood Expansion Team.
New funding became available this year from the state that allowed us to be able to expand our early childhood programming by over three years, up to 600 children. So for this year, the first year of our three-year expansion, we added 200 spots.
Campbell opened its doors this school year to 200 four- and five-year-olds that'll be entering kindergarten next school year.
We had started conversations in January with a team of administrators to say, what will this look like? How can we do this? How can we make this a reality in our district?
What we know about children's brains are that 85% of their brain is fully developed by the age of five. And so getting them into a high-quality early childhood education before kindergarten is really gonna help bridge that achievement gap that we're seeing when they start kindergarten.
I think the goal from the beginning was for us to be able to serve families in a meaningful and respectful way and give them choices and give them opportunities.
We have some families that would not be able to access services if we didn't provide transportation or we didn't provide before and after care. So we realize the hardships that families have and we're trying to overcome those barriers to access early childhood programming.
Just incredible to me that we have this whole building that's full and vibrant and available for an additional 200 families in our community that wouldn't have been able to access this before.
It's an investment that we'll never have to second-guess, for sure.
We're in the second quarter and it's getting better every day. And kids are here and they're learning and they're loved within the walls of Campbell.
So it is my pleasure to introduce you to the members of our Early Childhood Expansion Team. As I call your names, please come forward. We have Leslie Ballou, Rhonda Valman, Joan Bradley, Dana Carroll, Kristy Davis, Sean Dilde, Tammy Flowers, Anitra Jackson, Derek Crowe, Bridgette Mars, Heidi Markwith Lyons, Dave Pelletier, Missy Riley, Jim Scott, and Kimberly Shin Brown. Congratulations.[622.29][622.29][applause]
Come on up here.
No, I still...
One group.
Thank you.
This really is ridiculous.
I'll take those if you want me to.
Thank you.
I didn't know we were...
Everybody's wearing black.
It's the night.
It's weird.
Jill's getting there.
There you go.
Thank you all.[642.16][642.16][applause]
So as always, we encourage you to continue to watch Power of One SPS on social media as more and more examples of great collaboration are being shared. At this time, we welcome Mrs. Marty Moore to the podium for our partner recognition.
Great. You've heard me talk about Yujima before. In 2016, five organizations, Springfield Public Schools, Bartley Decatur Neighborhood Center, Springfield Green County Library, Missouri State University, Department of Communications Sciences and Disorders, and the Springfield branch of the NAACP came together to develop Yujima Language and Literacy. Yujima is a Swahili word that means collective work and responsibility. It is one of the seven principles of Kwanzaa, an empowering nonreligious cultural observation. Focusing on families in the Bartley Decatur neighborhood, we began programming to leverage a unique, community-based model, empowering children and families to build literacy skills and social capital. Literacy and partnerships are the foundation of Yujima. Last September, Chase here in Springfield began providing meals and joining in the fellowship with the families gathered there, and they've served monthly faithfully for the entire past year. They've tangibly demonstrated one of the Yujima core values, which is specifically a belief in mutual respect and the principle of reciprocity. I help you, you help me. And I'm gonna tell you, as a mother with children, having somebody prepare a meal so you can bring your family to programming and you don't have to scurry to do that, I know what a blessing that is. This October, in addition to the continued commitment for meals this coming year every other month, they've donated additional money for programming through the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools. The support they provide is invaluable and has allowed us to grow the program. They've become a part of our Yujima family, led by Tabitha Morrow, who leads the charge in her role as Community Engagement and Volunteerism Coordinator. Tonight, she is joined by members of her leadership team, who I'll ask to join me at the podium in a minute, Tony Palladna, David Elliott, Courtney Cook, Jamie Tinker, Aliyah Robinson, Charity Steery, Hazel Lee. Dr. Sharita Thomas-Tate, the Visionary of Yujima, is also here, along with Mercedes Fulham and Kaia and Avery. Kaia and Avery, say hi. They are regulars in our program. The tagline on Tabitha's email is taken from Margaret Mead, who said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed volunteers can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that has." Please join me in thanking this small group of thoughtful, committed volunteers for the impact they have made for our Yujima families.[839.62][839.62][applause] Sharita, come on up here. Kaia, come on. Avery, come on up here with us. That's what it's all about. Mercedes, welcome. Okay. Here we go.
There we go.
There we go. Great.[850.62][850.62][applause] Thank you all for being here and allowing us to celebrate your achievements. We're gonna move to the approval of the agenda, 1.04. Do I have a motion to approve the Tuesday, November 27, 2018 Board of Education Regular Meeting Agenda? Thank you, Alina. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. And now we will vote. There's always better seats after the celebrations are complete. Are we... Oh, there we go. And so that passed. We can move on. We're gonna move on to public comments to address agenda items, and we do have several public comments this evening. So I will read. "The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being discussed. It is recommended that requests to speak be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the Board Secretary. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with speakers during the meeting. If you have materials that you want to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary and she will distribute them to the Board members." We will begin with Dr. Don McClintock. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
To the distinguished superintendent and all the school board members, I want to thank you for this time. I'm addressing the bond issue that is supposed to be put on the ballot here shortly. I rise tonight in favor of a bond initiative if it includes the non-closing of Portland, but rather a Portland-Jared K-8 complex that I believe would promote our community. Agreed that capital improvements need to be made as we are the second-largest school district in Missouri and need to improve a lot of our areas, and I'm all for that improvement. Four years ago, I voted for the bond initiative for our improvements that are now being made and see the excellent job that has been being done. Two years ago, I did not vote for the K-8 bond initiative, simply because of monetary factors more than the idea of the K-8. It was at that time where a number of folks that had come directly to me said that it would be a hardship upon them. I'm glad for a better economy that's happening right now, and I believe that it can be something very beneficial. As I am part of a community partnership with Portland Elementary, we've gone through with the Shoes for Schools and also staff recognition and many other things that we've been doing in that direction. See the need for updates and improvements so that children can have the atmosphere necessary for their learning and their development emotionally as well. And it is... I know that the task force has put a lot of effort into all of theirs, and I appreciate all the effort that everyone has made in that direction. I am concerned that by the language that is on the proposal, that it is basically so nut and bolts that people that don't have an understanding will bypass the improvement of schools and look just at their wallet. And they will look at that from seniors could be seeing that, especially if it's not placed in an understanding of how much it would impact them. I did some research. Our basic median home price is $123,000 to $156,000, which there are folks that are growingly going more towards renting than towards the newer homes during this time. I know of some people that are making $60,000 plus amongst themselves and cannot afford to have a home of that size. And so it is a growing concern that it might be a burden upon our seniors as well in this area. But I did some research. It would be about $50 additional tax upon those that would be on the South Side, like myself where I live, and less in different areas. But I believe the impact versus just the numbers of how they do assessment and everything, I think that there are a number of folks that they just see the assessment bill come in on once a year, and they don't really understand all the fundamentals of it. If there was a way of placing the impact upon a median resident, it would only be this. For all of this improvement that we would be doing for our school district, because we know that good schools attract people, attract business, they also help to lift the property prices, and it is a major central point. The Springfield Public Schools is a central point of our society, of community. And that's what we're seeing right now happening. There's more and more interest of partners to give back. That's why I'm here as well, speaking tonight. Upon this factor is I'm a give-backer. And we see others that are beginning to want to give back on a daily basis, a yearly basis, volunteer basis. And I would like to see that continued improvement along that way, with some caveats of maybe how that that would happen as we are so directly connected with Portland Elementary. So I appreciate your time on tonight.
Thank you, Dr. McClintock. Jeff Wong. Good evening.
Good evening. Dear Board of Education, thank you very much for the time for me to speak tonight. First of all, I was very impressed with how you celebrate. I think it just really sets the tone and gives me kind of an idea for the Boys and Girls Club board meetings. One thing, I just want to say that we've been watching the progress of the community task force. I'm very impressed with the documents you guys have created, and we're interested in partnering with you. Again, I want to share a little bit of a success story. The Boys and Girls Club were actually celebrating 80 years this year. We started in 1938. And for example, we have through the Community Development Block Grant, we have a McGregor in the Morning program that's very successful at McGregor Elementary. We also, every summer, we are a wraparound provider with Springfield Public Schools. Dr. Dawson's on our Board of Directors, and I see also a lot of administrators that are familiar faces. You guys are all very professional and great to work with. We have a quarterly program committee, and Springfield Public Schools employees will always come and sit on our committee. Actually, Dr. Jungman's come into our January program committee. And every day, we pick up from 35 schools. So we're just... We love partnering with you guys. And the Boys and Girls Club, our mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us the most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. We focus on academic success, good character and citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. And so during the last bond in 2013, the cities, the citizens of Springfield, they supported to build the new Sherwood Elementary. And so we were able to do a capital campaign, and we were able to add on to Sherwood Elementary, the first of its kind in the state of Missouri. It's the Surtoma unit. We got the idea from Toledo, Ohio. They actually have four of these Boys and Girls Clubs that are actually attached to a school. And honestly, it is incredible. We're in our fourth year. They have 292 members enrolled. They do both before-school and after-school. And so before-school, there's 100 kids every day that can get there, it's early at 6:30 in the morning. And then in after-school, we're averaging over 220 a day. I've been in Boys and Girls Clubs all my life, and honestly, again, a lot of it's the leadership over there, but also the teachers over there have been real welcoming, and so like a team effort. But in fact, they actually, at our national conference last May in San Diego, the Boys and Girls Club was... Springfield was voted the number-one program of all 4,000 Boys and Girls Clubs, and really it really is the Sherwood/Surtoma, that Surtoma unit that really did it. I mean, it's like, it's an incredible culture. And so we just, for example, I was just gonna share one quote with you here. A parent said this recently, "If it weren't for the club, I would have transferred to another school. The tutoring program has helped my son so much with his math scores and understanding. Having a separate space from school allows my son to unwind and relax. He is able to enter a new club space that helps him reset. Without this space, I think he would still feel like he was in school and would not be as successful in the tutoring program." And so again, we just, we want to continue to watch the progress, and we're in support of the bond issue in 2019, coming up in April. And we just would love to partner with you guys again. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I felt like I wanted to clap for you with that victory out in California. That's cool. Carl Heard.
Good evening. Greetings, school board members and administrators. I taught public schools for 30 years, I believe, in public schools. But Springfield, our 12 schools, are in imminent danger of becoming like Kansas City and San Luis. Even though you are striving and trying very hard and spending mega dollars, it's not working. I hope my remarks are helpful to turn the district around. These are compliments of the Springfield Business Journal. Enjoy. In the SBJ, you get seven days of news for $2. In the News &amp; Leader, you get one day of news for $2. I subscribe to both. Look at this list of private schools. Together, they have over 3,800 students enrolled. The number of schools is growing and enrollment is growing. It's all about competition. Other competition is homeschools. Huge numbers. The Southwest Home Education Ministries has a mailing list of 4,500 families. The homeschool co-op is, in a recent day, had 246 students. You know this. The homeschool basketball tournament occupies the JQH arena for a week. Other competition, charter schools could mean empty classrooms. Other competition, vouchers are in the realm of possibility. More loss of students. Other competition, online courses. You presented this, and you only allow dropouts to enroll.
Not true.
Okay. I stand corrected. Dr. Kleinsmith thinks the senior year could be eliminated. Think of the empty classrooms that would create. Other competition is area schools. They vote bonds to build more classrooms. Springfield is not doing that. You're trying to improve, but it's a different situation, so we're not competing with area schools. Because of competition, our 12 schools could experience significant enrollment decrease in the next 10 years. Look at the task force. None of the task force proposals have been vetted at the sites. I don't think their plans to do so. You just plan on selling it. Each school should be vetted. Now look at Portland Elementary. Closing Portland is just wrong. Since I retired, R12 has closed eight elementary schools. Voters will ask, is my school going to be next? Maybe even Roundtree. They have a low MGT score. Open classrooms are not working. Proof, look at the last two years of MAPS scores at Fremont and Sherwood. Anyway, this administration, I think, is obsessed with open classrooms. Final thoughts. R12 must do better. The homeschool co-op is, in a recent day, had two hundred and forty-six students. You know this, the homeschool basketball tournament occupies the JQH Arena for a week. Other competition, charter schools could mean empty classrooms. Other competition, vouchers are in the realm of possibility, more loss of students. Other competition, online courses. You presented this and you only allow dropouts to enroll.
Not true.
Okay, I stand corrected. Dr. Kleinsmith thinks the senior year could be eliminated. Think of the empty classrooms that would create. Other competition is area schools. They vote bonds to build more classrooms. Springfield is not doing that. You're trying to improve, but it's a different situation, so we're not competing with area schools. Because of competition, our twelve schools could experience significant enrollment decrease in the next ten years. Look at the task force. None of the task force proposals have been vetted at the sites. I don't think their plans to do so. You just plan on selling it. Each school should be vetted. Now look at Portland Elementary. Closing Portland is just wrong. Since I retired, R-12 has closed eight elementary schools. Voters will ask, is my school going to be next? Maybe even Roundtree, they have a low MGT score. Open classrooms are not working. Proof, look at the last two years of MAPS scores at Fremont and Sherwood. Anyway, when the, this administration, I think, is obsessed with open classrooms. Final thoughts, R-12 must do better before any bond is put before the voters for the following reasons. Number one, enrollment will decrease and thus R-12 improves to at least state average. Number two, don't push the, don't rush the bond, vet each building. Number three, be honest about open classrooms. And in closing, two thousand twenty would be a better time to present a bond proposal. Do you want the bond voted down? Don't rush it. Thank you, and of course, I want the best for the R-12 students.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to be here as was announced. My name's Marshall Kenny. I had the opportunity to speak with you all briefly when we initially presented the task force recommendation. And I say we, Bridgette and David, did a great job and Bridgette's here in attendance. So I just wanted to be here because I knew this was on the agenda this evening to consider the bond. And I wanted to just again reiterate my support for the efforts of the task force. You know, it's not easy work. It's not an easy decision that you all are being presented with, but I feel very strongly about the work that the task force has put forward. I do feel like we were very thoughtful in our process. We considered many different people's points of view. We had good debate and good discussion, and I think that the ultimate outcome is something that all the task force members were in agreement on the overall outcome of the work we've done. I do want to commend again Bridgette and David for leading that effort. They did a great job facilitating and as I think I mentioned last time around, the professional staff in the district that helped with data and information did a phenomenal job and that effort was led by Carol. So I really appreciate all of their work as we met over the months that the task force met. So I, you know, I'm a product of Springfield Public Schools and am proud to be a product of Springfield Public Schools. My wife is not, but she is a public school product from Mount Vernon, Missouri. And we have a two-year-old son that will be a product of Springfield Public Schools. And if we stay where we're currently living, we'll be a product of Roundtree Elementary School. So, you know, we are, we're very much supportive of the public school district, not only because we will personally be committed to it with regards to our child attending the school district, but also because I think I see the major benefit, as well as many other business people in our community, of having a positive and growing public school system that is innovative and is making investments in the community. And it's something that not only retains talent in our community, but I think attracts talent to our community. You know, we're looking to bring people in from out of state or out of area to work in Springfield. Having a great public school system is one of those things that people look towards. And so I commend you all's work. I know that it's tough work and we have good leaders, I feel like, leading the effort and appreciate all of you guys do. So I just want to say that, and I said this last meeting, I said this at our last task force meeting, that I feel like the task force work, although that piece of it's done, the work is really just beginning if you all put this on the ballot. And I think that there has to be a strong effort to get this across the finish line this time. I think we have a winning message that we can promote to voters, and I feel like that that message can sell if we get it out there and promote it right. And I think that getting people informed about the task force work and the efforts that were made to get diverse opinions is extremely important. And so, you know, I've spoken to my wife a lot about this and her and I both, you know, we're willing to do what we can personally to help organize folks, supporting this effort, and hope there's opportunities to get plugged in as we move this forward. And I really appreciate all of you all's work as this is going to be voted on this evening. But please do know that and we'll do everything we can. I know I'm hearing in the community sort of anecdotally from folks that I'm engaged with that there's, you know, I think we can get a broad level of support to help move this forward. So again, thank you all for your work and thanks for the time this evening.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thanks, Marshall.
Paul Williams, Chief Williams is here. Though he looks a little hard to recognize.
Men's Health Month, November, right?
You're on it.
To reduce grooming standards to try to bring recognition to men's health, so it seems to be working. So you have this for their four days, all right? And then I'll be clean shaven and I'll look normal. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I was out of town, unable to make it when David and Bridgette presented the task force report. So I saw that the issue of the bond issue was on the agenda today, so the opportunity for me to come and talk about that. But really, I'm here, I'm going to wear three hats, none of them really related to my uniform, so I apologize for that. But first, as a member of the task force, I was honored and proud to be a member of that. I think as Marshall stated, David and Bridgette did a fantastic job of facilitating, leading the discussions. I know Tim and Denise were there and saw some of that. But it was very evident early on that there was a wide variety of opinions, feelings, thoughts, emotions in the room. And it was very interesting over the five months as we, it was kind of one of those places where everybody's at opposite ends of the room and then finally they come together, and we did. We coalesced around the issue of what's best for our kids in this community. And I saw people, including myself, very strong opinions about something that those opinions softened and you came to the realization that what's best for the community may be best for what the group is and maybe my thoughts and opinions aren't the most important thing in the room. So we all came together. We reached unanimity occasionally, but consensus all the time. We didn't leave there. Any of the recommendations you've seen were not anything that somebody stood up and said, absolutely not, we cannot do that. We left no stone unturned, whether that was closing a building, creating early childhood, combining facilities, building a brand-new facility, whatever it might be. The results of the report were the result of those opinions in the room that I think really spoke highly of the people that were selected to be on it with the diverse opinions, but also gave you something to really look at moving forward is this what's best for Springfield Public Schools moving forward as far as facilities are concerned. So the second half, I'm a member of a group called Fight Crime Investing Kids, National Organization of Criminal Justice Professionals, police chiefs, sheriffs, and prosecutors from around the country. We have one goal in mind. There is no better way to reduce crime and make our communities better and safer than putting money into kids' early childhood and having that effect throughout their lives. Can't tell you how many people I've come across in my almost forty years, my career, if they'd have had someone, something, some investment made in them early on, I wouldn't be dealing with them as a juvenile delinquent, as an adult criminal, as a career criminal, as someone who's off the streets for the rest of their lives. So putting money into kids in a variety of ways, and I can't tell, I'm a huge proponent of early childhood education, preschool education. I'm thrilled where SPS is moving with that. I'm glad that's a component of the task force report in some way. And then the third half, and I'm a parent. I have a child who's a product of Springfield Public Schools. I have a child who's currently in Springfield Public Schools. And for the last eight years since I've been here, I've never had any qualms about the quality of the educators and the quality of education my kids have received and are receiving. But I've been disappointed in the quality or lack thereof of facilities that my kids have been in and their friends' kids and my friends' kids, and that's a district-wide issue. So I'm pleased that what we're doing, what was presented to you, is an opportunity to match the excellence in the educators and the students that we have with some excellent facilities moving forward. It's not a short-term approach. It's not something we're going to do in the next year, five years. I go back to my Fight Crimes Group and we look at a generational thing. We need to invest now to see the effect a generation from now. I think that's what we're talking about with this task force report and a potential bond proposal is, can't be short-sighted, can't think we're going to fix something in the next two years, but look at that long-term about how we're going to be five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. So you may have guessed, I'm here speaking in favor of you putting on the ballot, and I would say do it sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Bridgette Dirks. Madam Chairwoman.
Good evening.
Hi. Thanks so much for having me today. I'm really delighted to see you all again. You have recently seen a lot of me and I just wanted to come and give a little bit more thoughts on it and come from more of a personal perspective, if that's all right. I'm very much in favor of putting this on the ballot. Obviously, we have spent significant time in a public forum working toward these suggestions that we have made to you all. Our committee was well-educated. We received abundant information and research to help us make these decisions. We by no means came at it from the same perspectives or from the same place at the beginning, but we came to conclusions that we all could live with and that we all felt were for the good of the community. This is a big undertaking and it's a very important one. In my professional career and personally, I'm very much an enthusiast of equity. I think that equitable educational spaces are incredibly important in any community and in Springfield where we have the largest school district in the state and we have arguably unequitable learning spaces, we really must address these issues. So that was the perspective that I came at it. I also came at it from the perspective of a preschool mom. I have a child who will attend Springfield Public Schools. Someday down the road, he will be in Cowden and he will be at Jarrett and on up, and it matters a lot to me. Now, not everyone on the task force necessarily, it wasn't a group of preschool parents, although Marshall was also a preschool parent. But not everyone was a parent of a future student or a parent necessarily of a current student, but we had lots of perspectives. We had individuals whose children, grandchildren had attended SPS, but we also had individuals who came from a different perspective, who brought perspective as taxpayers and just community members. So this diverse group of people came to this conclusion, and it would be a real tragedy if you did not seriously consider the work that was undertaken by all these individuals who spent a very significant amount of their summer reading a lot of materials and attending a lot of meetings. We toured schools. We spent a lot of time at the community foundation, working together, coming to agreements and reaching consensus. So I would very much encourage you to heavily weigh the work that we have undertaken because it represents our community as a whole and it represents what we believe taxpayers will be willing to support. We think that this work is important. We think that this work will significantly improve issues of equity in Springfield, which is incredibly important, and we think that you all should approve it. So my remarks are brief, but that's what they are. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much. Crystal Quaid. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for allowing me to speak. I too comes before you with many, many hats on. Like Bridgette and Marshall before me, I am a mother of a preschooler, but then I also have children currently in Springfield Public Schools as well. So I'm a parent from the north side, obviously a state representative from the north side, an active community member, and I've been a part of this specific process for quite some time. So I was very honored to be asked to be a part of the task force. But the last time we tried this, I was one of the parents who got to sit in on some of the original discussions that were brought forth with the folks who came in, who gave us all the different planning options, you know. So I've been through this process for a little while. I want to say first thank you to everyone who was involved in the decision to create the task force and for the thought that was put into how that was done. As a resident of the north side and a parent, I know not everybody was very happy the first go-around. They did not feel that it was very transparent and open and not everybody's perspectives were brought to that table. And you all heard that, you responded as leaders should, and I thank you for that. Being a part of this process was really great because there were so many different voices at the table. And as a legislator, it's my opinion that it is important to have those different perspectives and the best product comes when you have discussion from people who start off not agreeing. And in my opinion, this is what happened. We had a lot of folks in that room from the beginning to the end that disagreed. There were some meetings that were a little bit more forceful than others on those disagreements, but I do believe that overall we came forward with a product that people believe is what's best for our kiddos. As a resident of the north side and I like to refer to myself as an advocate for the north side, is I have lived there for over fifteen years and plan to never leave and my children will graduate from Central High School. Equity, as Bridgette referred to, is so important for our kiddos. Before becoming a legislator, I worked for the nonprofit Care to Learn for many years and I can, we all know poverty exists everywhere, but we also know the disparities between our buildings, very blatantly between certain sides of the city. And it is extremely important that our kiddos that live in certain areas feel just as special and as important as the other kids. And when you're, you know, my children, I have a son at Central High School right now, and when he goes to the south side to wrestle, he sees the difference and he talks to me about it. And you shouldn't, it shouldn't be based on where you live, the kind of education that you may even be perceived to have. You know, our educators have done a great job with what we've given them, but perception is a lot, especially for kids. I know that you all understand that. So I just again want to thank you for the way the task force was created and how it was implemented. I felt like it was a very open and honest dialogue and I appreciated that. And unbeknownst to some people, I was constantly posting everything on social media that happened, taking photographs of all the documents so that my constituents could know what was going on. I did get feedback online and folks asked a lot of questions, but people also appreciated the opportunity to see what was happening while we were doing it. So I will say that I do hope that you all choose to move forward. I know that we have a long way to go and I hope that parental input continues to be a part of this conversation as it has been. But I will just say that I'm happy and excited to work on a campaign that is not for myself. I will be here to help you along the way as long as voices are continued to be heard. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Fred Ellison.
I learned a long time ago not to step up to a podium without some notes because in speaking to city council on numerous occasions, I found out that the results were not really good when you didn't have some notes. I appreciated the opportunity to participate in the Community Task Force, which reviewed the district's facility master plan. I found that the task force report was largely an approval of the administration's repackaging of the bond issue that was rejected by voters in April of two thousand seventeen. The administration had wisely discarded the portion of the previous plan, which called for the creation of several new large K-8 campuses. And the new proposal will call for the renovation of Reed and Pippin Middle Schools on some future bond proposal and the reconstruction of Jarrett Middle School at the current site of Portland Elementary. The main casualty of the first bond proposal is Portland Elementary and the chaos which will be created at Sunshine Elementary when an additional two hundred students are crammed into a campus that has insurmountable transportation and traffic issues. Portland Elementary families are losing their neighborhood elementary school in the same way that Campbell Elementary lost its neighborhood school. And this is the same thing that was proposed for Bowerman and York Elementary's, which the task force opposed, and at least in the near term, has been, this has been avoided if the board follows the task force recommendation. However, four years from now, when the projects for bond issue number two are selected, I fully expect that administration will once again place York, whose renovation is in bond proposal two, will be back on the chopping block. After all, future boards cannot be forced to honor previous board plans or task force recommendations. The same is likely to be true for Bowerman when bond issue number three projects are developed as seven or eight years from now. Personally, I feel that neighborhood elementary schools are the foundation of a strong educational program and essential to social connection at the neighborhood level. Neighborhood elementary schools should be within walking distance of all families served and because of this, are ideal locations for election polls where students can learn the importance of citizen involvement in self-government. Personally, I find it difficult to support any proposal which damages neighborhoods and increases elementary schools' sizes by closing neighborhood elementary schools. It also needs to include an assurance from the school board in our twelve administration that student outcomes will improve. The taxpayers are being asked to repay five hundred million dollars in bonds plus interest. What do they have a right to expect? I believe they have a right to expect measurable improved student success. Ultimately, test scores matter. We keep scores in athletics, business, elections, you name it, we keep scores. Education is no different than any other activity. We need to accept responsibility for outcomes and for scores. I appreciate you listening to me this evening. I know that we were I know that we were, you have a lot on your plate when it comes to deciding on the first bond issue, but I sincerely hope that maybe there's still some time to think about Portland Elementary and to think about the problems that we're going to create at Sunshine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to move on to consent agenda minutes three, four, and five for financial and personnel. Personnel elections, promotions, terminations, and employee compensation plan changes. Do I have a motion that the board approve the consent agenda items 3.01 through 5.01?
So moved.
Thank you, Charles. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim, and let's please vote. Oh, that was quick. Okay, so that passed and we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Ms. Embry, good evening.
Good evening. We have posted our normal reports for you. I believe there are 13 separate reports. One of the items posted is the annual report to the state that aligns with the audit that you received and you'll be voting on here in a few minutes. I'll highlight for you that the budget amendment that is included within this report does provide for some amendments and those are a variety. I've mentioned to you before that it is during this window of time that we have now fully realigned the budget for salary and benefits and we've also taken a closer look at some of our federal programs, revenues, and expenditures. So those are all included. Results in a revenue decrease overall of $541,429 and an expenditure increase of $395,590, but due to the fund changes within some of that, overall, we have a very stable fund balance percentage continuing and the change from the last time we reported at 16.6 now results in a 17.05 ending fund balance percentage projected for June 30. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Questions? All right, I don't think we have any questions. I'm sure everyone has studied. Do I have a motion that the board approve the treasurer's report as presented? Thank you, Bruce, and a second?
Second.
Is that you, Charles? Let's please vote. And that passed, so we will move on to information reports, section seven. And we have Ms. Bridgette Mars, Executive Director of the Mayor's Commission for Children, here this evening. Good evening. Is it coming along how you want it to, or do I have to call a friend?
I don't know. Does it? All right, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for letting me just come and give you a little snapshot of the Mayor's Commission for Children. One of the things that, I think I came in the spring to offer a letter of support for the early childhood expansion, and I just thought I would kind of come back and give you a little bit of a history of how important that has been to our commission. We had a retreat back in March that included a SWOT analysis and we formed a strategic plan and really revised our mission and vision statement. So I definitely wanted to share that with you because it really speaks to our support in what Springfield Public Schools is doing, especially in the expansion of early childhood. Our mission is to ensure every child matters by acting as a catalyst to mobilize and educate our community concerning the health and well-being of our local youth. Our vision statement is very simple. It's to be the voice for children's issues in our community. A little history about the Mayor's Commission. It was formed in 2004 formally by Mayor Carlson. And prior to that, there had been a group called Every Kid's Counts that had met five years prior to that. They were operating off the Children's Trust Fund grant and they were very active. And one of the main components of their actions was early childhood expansion. So after it was formalized, the city ordinance states that our purpose is to mobilize and educate the community concerning health and well-being, provide an unbiased reporting of community progress, and then special emphasis needs to be placed on the zero through five age bracket. Children need to start school ready to learn by third grade, be proficient in reading, and the social emotional skills to succeed. The Good Community Group and the Vision 2020 Education Committee were also very supportive in having a Mayor's Commission for Children. There are only two. There's a Mayor's Commission for Human Rights and a Mayor's Commission for Children. So we've kind of been around for 20 years, but formally for 15, going on our 15th year. One of the things that we've done a much stronger job is really focusing our alliance also with public health and some of the health communities and rural health. We always go offsite a couple of times a year and this one was a September meeting at Jordan Valley. And Matt Stinson gave us an update of Jordan Valley's expansion and specifically Women and Children Services. And we took a tour following. In October, we were over at the Early Childhood Center at Campbell and wanted to see the building after it had been repurposed. And as you know, the commission has been supportive with the school district by offering that letter of support last spring. That smaller photo is the ribbon cutting and Kimberly Shen Brown represented the Mayor's Commission at that point. And if you remember, she said it's basically a dream come true. Kimberly has worked with this group for 10 years trying to push the early childhood One of the other things that the Mayor's Commission is involved in is the kindergarten readiness study. This year, it involved all classes and a special thank you to Dr. Jungman and Mike Dawson because your efforts and your support to the participating school gave us the best response rate ever in our studies. This was the fifth study that we have done and MSU is very excited about the data. They're in the process of compiling that and will have the results in the spring of 2019. You know, I think it's important to know that that study has probably been a driving force to support early childhood, so. Just a little update, there might be several of you that have heard about this. The Mayor's Commission in November brought in Jeff Quinn from Duke University. He had been here two or three years ago and presented to the Mayor's Commission. And this is a program that's been in effect at Duke in Durham for 10 years. And it was originally wanting to support families and really reduce child abuse in Durham. And so he came, spoke with us, and also spoke to Good Community a couple of weeks ago. And we were very pleased with the people that were in the room. There's excitement about looking at this program, looking at what we have, and just building a coalition. So I think you're going to be hearing more about this. And once again, public health, it's a medical model. It's basically a newborn. It's universal. Anyone who has a newborn at the hospital signs up for this program. It's visiting nurses and then there's a nice handoff to community resources if that family needs it. So it's a wonderful way for some of our agencies really to get more participation in their own programs, whether that be parents, teachers, head start. So we're excited about that and we're really looking forward to hearing more about that. If you are interested in how to find what's going on with the Mayor's Commission, this is just where you can go to find our page. And you can kind of see to the left there, we have a separate page just for the state of Springfield Early Childhood that uses some graphics from our studies. The studies are located there dating back to 2006. And a listing of our agendas and minutes are also listed there. This is our current roster on the commission and advisory council. This was new this year that we started an advisory council. The Board of Directors are nominated by city council and the mayor for three-year terms and then the Mayor's Commission appoints advisory council. And this year, we now have the school board represented as well as the city council. So I just wanted to stress to you how supportive that group of people are. Some of the professionals on there are pediatricians, they are from Cox and Mercy. We've got executive directors from some nonprofits. We just have a really strong group of people that are really advocating for kids. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to section eight, 0.1, Board Policy Adoptions. Dr. Jungman.
Yep, you have these two brought before you at the study session. And again, these were recommendations from MSBA following legislative changes and federal changes, so they're pretty boilerplate, but they're for your consideration.
We've all had an opportunity to look at those. Do I have a motion that the board adopt all policies as presented?
So moved. Second.
Charles with the motion, Tim with the second by a manner of nanoseconds. Now we can all note.
I would never play against him in jeopardy.
I would not either.
He would ring in before me.
Okay, and we appreciate Dr. Jay Anderson being on the ball here. We're going to switch to new business. Calendars, you know how important to me.
I'm excited for this annual opportunity.
Always are. You're excited every year.
Stop downplaying the importance of this.
This is important. Both Dr. Jungman and I are missing our daughter's swim meet tonight.
I am too.
For this board, for this calendar information.
Almost for you.
I bet they're still there and still swimming.
They are. My wife just texted me and my daughter is currently wet, so. I'd like to bring forward to you the first read of the 2019-2020 learning calendar. So the rules have changed a little bit and I want to go over what rules have changed. Continuing is still at, the district will set an opening date. If we have, there's more than 10 days before the first Monday in September, the local school board must have a public notice and discussion point at that. So that is remaining the same. What has changed is starting July 1st, 2019, is that it's just an hours requirement. And before this point, there were four options that we could devise a school calendar. And all of those are gone away and there's only one rule and it's based upon not days, but based upon hours. And so, and we've always followed and aligned to this already, so it wasn't too much of a transition for us, honestly. It wasn't any transition for us since we already went a little bit beyond the minimum requirement. So that is what's changed. And so you can have as many or as few school days as you want in a calendar year. They just have to meet that 1,044-hour requirement. So within that, we choose to honor a couple of themes. We honor Martin Luther King Day. We honor President's Day. We schedule a non-cancellable spring break. And then we also want to do this as open input opportunities. So we meet with parents and teachers, various department leaders and representatives, district leaders, and we work with our higher education counterparts as well. So in looking this, I'll train your eye to the calendar a little bit. At the bottom is a key. It may be a little difficult to see, so I'll point some things. If it's a red circle, that means the school system is closed. With these yellow stars, in a sense, indicate the beginning or end of a quarter. The triangles indicate that that's a staff day, but students are out. And then the box means that the system is open, but students and staff are out on those days. A couple of things that we added previously to this calendar, this will be, I think, our third year of making sure that the Explore Window Calendar is included so families have the full picture of when we plan to do our summer school Explore programming. So with the specific calendar that's in front of you, the starting date is always, it's, we don't pick a date at the beginning of the year and build it from there. The actual first date that we do some calendar planning is Christmas Day and New Year's Day. And we plan third quarter first and then plan backwards. And the reason is that because when Christmas Day falls, matters a lot. If it's in the middle of the week, you usually get a two-week Christmas or winter break. And if it's on a weekend, usually it changes a little bit. So it changes the flavor of the calendar every year. And so this year, with Christmas Day following on the middle of the week and New Year's one week after, you're not going to get probably a high attendance on January 2nd following New Year's Day. So those are considerations. They're not end-all, be-all, but they're considerations. So with this calendar, the thing that makes it interesting with New Year's Day and following on a Wednesday and then planning forward from there, trying to get the number of school days in. Memorial Day in May seems to be a cutoff point. We try to, as much as we can, try to finish school before that time. Families sometimes lose interest in coming back to school if we're extending past Memorial Day and we want to get as high attendance as we can and let that be a driver. And that's important this year for a couple of reasons. So I'm going to go through the key strengths as well as the challenges of this. So the key strengths is we're already within DESI regulations of this calendar and that's great news. This year, it includes early childhood and wonder year since that's part of R-80 and that's important. And so that, our wonder year's program, our early childhood, and if you train the eye on the screen to, we're encircling with that, it's noted there. August 15th will be our early childhood wonder year start date and that'll be on the calendar for all families. That'll be two days after our regular students start. And that gives us, a lot of times, our early childhood educators are great supporters and coming help start kindergarten those first couple of days and then they start their own classrooms and we really love that support, yes.
Were we a little more than that this year? I feel like it was a little longer that we waited to start.
We waited three days this year. We started school on a Wednesday and early childhood started on a Monday, the following Monday. So this year, as you see, our start day for students is August 13th, which is a day before what we've started the last two years. And I'll explain why that is in just a moment because it has everything to do with the end date. And then, of course, we have the framing time for Explore 2020. It's hard to think about, we're proposing that, but we're talking about 2020 now, so. Key challenges, we are always striving to increase as much and give as much professional learning development, collaboration opportunities to our teachers so that they continue to grow and can support our students in the best way. And the other key challenge is the inclement weather. The new rule, along with 1,044 hours, The new rule, along with 1,044 hours, it doesn't say how many days you have to make up. It says you must plan for 36 hours of inclement weather, which roughly translates to six days. Our general, their average learning day for our students is 6.25 hours. When we multiply 1,072 student contact days times 6.25 hours, we get an average of 1,075 student learning hours in our system. And so we are surpassing that, but we still have to build in those inclement weather days. And so I'll train your eye again to the calendar. So if we do not use any of the inclement weather days, the last day may be as early as May 15th, which is right here. Then we have built in, and so we say to our public, our last day of school we are planning for is May 22nd. However, if we have no snow days to make up, we may release as early as whatever date, okay? So it could be as early as the 15th, but if we have one, two, three, four, or five inclement weather days to make up, we have that built in there. If we had to do a sixth day, that means we would have to come back the day after Memorial Day for one day on the 26th. That didn't go over very well with the committee members and they say, and even with the teacher groups that we met with, they were saying, "We would rather not do that. Is there other options to consider?" And I said, "Well, this is our committee. Let's talk about that." And they came up with some options and this is what is being proposed with this calendar, is that if we have to make a sixth day or another 6.25 hours of makeup time, that it be done on April 10th, which is right now listed as a staff day with students out. Now, this is a professional day for our teachers. If that became an inclement weather day, what we would have to do is it would be required that all of our staff, our certified staff, make up that professional time under the direction of their supervisor. So it might be a two-hour professional development on this day. Or this week, we're adding this much time to the teacher's work calendar to make up for that time because it's a paid day and it honors them and their learning. So that's the proposal that has landed. And that information, it's in very small print right here, but when you see, if you have a hard copy or can get it on your system, that's what this information right here explains. Any questions about that before I go on?
No.
So just a quick look. We keep track of our surrounding districts and they generally start within the same week and timeframe and they're planning on doing so. We also have for here some of our larger counterparts, what they are planning on starting. And next to their, the name of their district, it tells you what year. Some have already released their 1920 calendar and some have not yet, but it gives you an idea of their start date, how many student contact days they have and how many teacher contract days. And that's just for comparison reasons. Again, we have 172 student contact days, 185 teacher contract days. So I add into you the Robertson Community School Calendar. They are on a little different timeframe and we always want to inform you of what they are planning. Remember that they take two-week intercessions throughout the year a little differently and extend their school year. Basically, it's their Explore built in through the school year and this is what they are planning on doing. And it's cut and paste, in a sense, of last year. They do have the same start date as us, but after that, it becomes up to them. And pretty successful they continue to have in the 60s and 70s participation rate in their extended programming. So at this time, what questions or directions do you have from this first read that I can, that we can address? I appreciate, I didn't mention, this is co-owned this year with Dr. Dublin and appreciate the team effort to make this happen. And if you have directions for Dr. Dublin and I in working with our groups before we come back to you in two weeks, we'd be open to that now.
Anybody want to weigh in on the difficult equations of the calendar? It's all you, man. That's how I look at it.
Dr. Jungman, did you get that on tape?
In fact, he did. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move to unfinished business and no one will be coming to the podium because we had presentation from Diana Klosterman at the last meeting from Westbrook and Company. So do I have a motion that the Board of Education accepts the 2017-2018 financial audit as presented?
So moved.
Tim and a second.
Second.
Charles, and let's all vote. Okay, and that passes and we'll move on to 10.02. We're going to talk about the, or have a motion on the transportation bus purchase Dr. Travis Shaw presented last time, so he will not be coming up this time. We are going to have a motion on that proposal. Is there a motion that the Board authorize the superintendent or his designee to approve the bid with Midwest Transit Equipment as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Jerry, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Bruce, and let's vote. And that passes. We'll move to 10.03, the 2019 Legislative Platform, and Dr. Jungman will cover this.
You received the edited version last time. I see any additional feedback, so I'm ready to proceed with that recommendation. Just a couple of points for clarification of our next steps is sharing it with our legislators, so we'll go to print with that. If it's adopted tonight or whatever's changed tonight. And I start one-on-one individual meetings with representatives and senators next week. And we have the number 11th reception prior to the board meeting scheduled for Campbell Early Childhood Center. So those legislators can see the opportunities that they provided through the expansion, through the formula. One thing, just to note that the freshman legislative tour is going on during that time and we do have a few freshmen, so we'll be short. We're hoping there's enough to continue, but we'll plan to do some follow-up. Small group opportunities to engage with the freshman representatives from our region also. That's it on the platform.
Great. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the recommended updates to the attached Springfield Public Schools 2019 Legislative Platform for the 2019 Legislative Session? Thank you, Alina, and a second.
Second.
Is that Jerry?
Yeah.
Sometimes when I don't get my head turned in time, I gotta, I found you. And everybody vote. And that passes. And we're going to move to 10.04, the bond issue ballot language. Ms. Embry will come up. Hello again.
Hello again. So we are going to revisit just part of what we reviewed at the last meeting so that everyone will have context over the information before you. So this is a reduction, basically, of the same presentation as last month, or not last month, last meeting on the 13th of November. The facility planning timeline was covered with you and the work began back in January 2016, culminating in a report from the Community Task Force members after meeting twice a month from June through October to you. That report was delivered October 16, 2018. We did review the post-election community feedback and covered the survey information. This slide of these five highlights shows the primary results and that was the focus of the work moving forward. The Community Task Force was formed and charged with the driving question indicated here, what facility improvement projects need to be completed to ensure all SPS students have access to safe and quality learning environments. Excuse me. And the charge to review the information regarding the current state of SPS facilities and provide feedback and recommendations to the Board of Administration regarding high priority projects they believe that the community would support in a future bond issue. As has been reviewed this evening by many people, there was a diverse group of participants. It was co-chaired by Mr. David Hall and Ms. Bridget Dirks and Dr. Frederick and Mr. Rosenberg served on that committee as well. Information is all posted publicly. I should go back to that. It was posted throughout the meetings. All information was available to the public and the meetings were open to the public. Information is available at sbs.org/facilityplan. This list represents the Community Task Force additional members who served throughout that period of time. As I mentioned previously, they did meet from June through October, spent a multitude of hours together reviewing information and dialoguing about what they've learned. This list provided the information and presentations that were provided to all the Community Task Force members. And additionally, there were tours of multiple facilities conducted for them to have context over the information presented and to see the needs. The Community Task Force then evaluated the projects based on this criteria and this was all shared within the report that was provided to the Board by Mr. Hall and Ms. Dirks. And this represents the full recommendation of the Community Task Force. This slide, you will recall, represents the actual 2019 bond issue recommendation for April 2019 that was presented by the Community Task Force. And it calls for nearly $168 million in needs. This list provides the secure entrances that are noted on that previous slide that total just over $4.8 million. And on this list, there are 21 sites with 22 entrances to be addressed. Two of those are at Central High School. The next list provides those additional sites. Part of the report recommendation included requesting funding be allocated to address the secure entrances for projects that would not be addressed during the April 2019 bond issue project work. We provided you at the November 13th meeting the sequencing plan and the highlights from that plan include that we would need to immediately deliver on acquiring land for Boyd on an expanded footprint in the Midtown region, that we would complete the design of secure entrances for 31 schools. Number three, that site review and design work for the Southwest Region Early Childhood Center would take place. And also, four, complete design for New Delaware on the current site. Five, complete design of renovation and expansion of the Sunshine Elementary Site. The ballot language was provided for you and we did provide two versions. The first is an option with a levy in one year. Shall the school district of Springfield R12 issue its general obligation bonds in the amount of $168 million for the purpose of improving, repairing, renovating, and acquiring buildings, including security improvements? Number two, constructing new buildings, purchasing land? And three, furnishing and equipping school buildings? If this proposition is approved, the district's adjusted debt service levy is estimated to increase by 18 cents to $73.100 of assessed valuation in tax year 2019. This slide helps people understand, helps you understand, the impact for a homeowner of a $100,000 market value home would be $34.20 annually. That equates to $2.85 per month. A second ballot language option is identical in the first paragraph. The second paragraph, however, provides that the levy would be phased in over a two-year process with nine cents, raising the levy to 64 cents per $100 of assessed valuation in tax year 2019 and by an additional nine cents, raising the levy to 73 cents per $100 of assessed valuation in year 2020. With that proposed language, nine cents and then nine cents in 2020, the impact on a homeowner for a $100,000 market value home is $17.10 annually the first year and an additional 17.10 in the second year for a total increase of $34.20 annually or $2.85 per month. The total bond issue recommended is over 10% lower than the April 2017 bond issue requested. And additionally, the levy recommended is 25% lower than the April 2017 levy increase requested. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you. Questions and/or comments?
I've got a question.
Sure.
I think I know the answer, putting you on the spot. Is that in the draft ballot language, both of them, it says, "If this proposition is approved, the district's adjusted debt service levy is estimated to increase by X." Now, why does it say estimated? Why doesn't it just say it's going to increase by that?
Right. So when we are setting the tax levy for, we have the authority to raise it to that level. As we've described in this very room, that the levy increases for the operating account are limited to the Consumer Price Index and the levy for the debt service account is set at an amount needed to fund the principal and interest and any fee payments for that account. So in the event, there would be a significant increase of assessed valuation in our community, it could be determined that rather than rolling back the 30 cents that we currently roll back because our levy actually calculates the .85 and additional digits. We could potentially, right now, we're reducing that or rolling that back 30 cents down to .55, 55 cent levy. We could potentially have other rollbacks occur dependent on the calculation process and it simply derived from the assessed valuation multiplied by the levy.
That's kind of what I thought.
That's a good question.
Well, I think, I think the point is, is that this would be the maximum. It would be no more than that. That, that, it ties the Board's, basically, to that, but likely it's going to be lower than that. Assuming that we have a community that increases in value. And a community increases in value in many ways, but one of the ways is the public investments that are made in it. Which, this is kind of a rising tide kind of situation, it seems to me.
Other questions? So if we do not have other questions, is this a good time for people to say any comments that they want to say about this process we've been through and what we're about to do? Who wishes to go first?
I'm sure we all have a comment, so.
Right. I'm expecting each of you to chime in. Who would like to start the process? Because I'm going to call on somebody in a minute, Charles.
Yeah, I'm happy to dive in. You know, I am hardly Pollyanna, but I also don't respond particularly well to sort of apocalyptic predictions, et cetera. I think that Springfield can do better and I think this is a significant first step in the process for doing that. I think that when I sort of look at this from a 30,000-foot level, what I see is that this embraces community on two levels. One, I think, in terms of inputs. I think it reflects probably the most engaged community input of any similar entity with which I am aware at any level in some ways. I mean, I think we listened with open ears and occasionally had our ears pinned back by the, by the feedback of the Community Task Force and I think they were right. So I think we've embraced community in that regard. And I also think that it does embrace the wisdom of community schools. And, 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 Portland is a difficult issue. Portland is a difficult issue. And I'm pleased that should we approve this, that there is a communication plan. I would also encourage us to have an operational plan. I think we don't often close schools here or integrate them into other communities and that's not a decision any of us are going to take lightly. And we will have more time to do it than our most recent experience. And I think that's a good thing. And I think we need to be mindful of that, to honor the Portland community and to integrate them and to anticipate as many things as we can as they integrate the students into different school communities. And I think as Minority Leader Quaid commented earlier, this is fundamentally, I think, an investment in equity. We have more to do, but this is a crucial start. I do not believe we can achieve equity without engaging in this kind of systemic planning. The investment in early childhood education strikes The investment in early childhood education strikes me as extraordinarily important for this community, and frankly, kind of a no-brainer in some ways, even as somebody who overthinks a lot of stuff. And the last thing that I would say is, you know, a couple of speakers have commented that, so, are we going to be accountable to the taxpayers, to the patrons of our district? Yeah, we have every right to expect all of us to do better, and I know of no one in Springfield who isn't committed to doing better for kids than the people who are in the classrooms and will be in these newer classrooms, right? But I do think we ought to observe that while, I would agree that ultimately, scores matter, scores do not matter ultimately. They are not the most and only important thing, and we have to raise those, and I think they will be a consequence of doing all the other things right. And the first thing that we have to do right, in my judgment, is to approve this bond ballot language and take this to the voters.
Thank you. Alina, would you like to go next?
I'll make some notes here, so I'm going to try to stay organized and quick. First, I would just like to say to my fellow board members that I think that we have modeled what we try to teach our students, which is when you, when at first you don't succeed, you don't quit. You regroup. We have listened. We have tried a different process. We have engaged very different voices, and I think that that has kept us moving forward to reach a stronger outcome. So, that's what we teach in our schools every day, and our teachers teach that to the kids. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that this board is modeling that. Second, you know, in our community, we've talked about the difference between signal and noise. Everybody knows kind of what I'm, I'm fellow board members. And what I'm hearing is a loud signal from our task force members who have been very thoughtful throughout this entire process. And just to give you an example, you know that I was out of town when the task force made their recommendation, and I hated to miss that, but I watched it online, so. But when I got back, I was able to just meet one on some of the task force members, and a couple of people are actually in the audience still. But I was able to meet with Melanie Donnell, who is the SNEA rep. We had coffee together. I met with Eki Bolts, who's still here with the PTA, and then had a long phone call with Laurie Sullivan. As you know, was a Hillcrest teacher and the MSTA, I'm sorry, too many pronouns, rep on the task force. But, you know, I just really wanted to hear from them what the process was like for them, and I also shared with them, and they had very positive things to say about the process. And they also were very supportive of what the task force recommendation was. And I assured them that this board cares about making sure that teachers and parents have a voice, and that we were very thoughtful when we put the task force together. And so, I just, and, you know, and Crystal played tonight something that she said out to me. She talked about, she was taking pictures and posting that to her constituents, and I just want to point out that this wasn't just 30 people that were looking at this. These people all represented large groups of people, that they are an advocate for those groups. So, when we talk about the task force, it's not just 30 people that were weighing in. So, while we will always have some noise, I think it's our responsibility to listen to the signal that we are receiving. The third comment I'd like to make, and actually, one of our patrons, patrons using Tim's word, mentioned it tonight, is that while we can't tie future boards to particular
That's true.
constraints, I'm willing to be here over the next several years, and I plan to hold to not only support but accountable whoever our administrators are at that time. And I also know that when I talk to people, they talk about public trust with the board, and I know that we feel very strongly about demonstrating that accountability, and while we are here, we will do the best we can. And I'm going to just throw it out there, because we haven't all been together to talk about this, but I would love to see an ongoing communication and briefing to the task force, whatever that looks like, if the district could update, whether that's annually, over the next few years, if we do take this to the voters, that we brief the task force as a way of showing gratitude, briefing them of the progress that has or will be potentially made, and also demonstrating accountability. And lastly, if we move forward with this proposition tonight, I just want you all to know that I am willing to take an active role in whatever the citizens advocacy looks like. And I was thrilled to hear some people tonight talk about that they are already having conversations about that, so I will definitely plan to reach out to some of those people. I want to thank Tim and Denise for spending your entire summer. You did, you spent your entire summer representing our board, and I just want to publicly thank you for that. When I first came on the board a few years ago, when we ran the other proposition, this was a new process to me, to see it this close and personal, and I know that as a board member, we'd be very active in the advocacy roles, and I know we feel strongly about that. I love what she, I'll close with, I love what Chief Williams said tonight, that he believes that, I'm paraphrasing, something about, he believes our excellence in teaching should match our excellence in facilities, and that stood out to me. We have a lot of good things that are happening between all of our staff and our students, and so, we have a lot of excellence going on, so I look forward to seeing what comes next.
Thank you. Who's Jerry? Jerry, it is.
Couple three points. I guess one is, you know, as representatives of the community elected by the community, you know, nobody said things like this were going to be easy, and there are tough decisions that we have to be made. If they were easy, we wouldn't be talking about this for the last three years. We wouldn't, I mean, if they were easy decisions, we wouldn't be doing all that we're doing now. So, they are very, very tough decisions that we've got to make. And I think I heard so many times people talk about consensus versus unanimity. In this situation, you're not going to, I don't care, you may not get unanimity within seven people here, but you get a consensus. So, I think that is a really important aspect that we need to be thinking about, that this, is it perfect? No. Is it the best for kids that we think we can do? Yeah. But it's not easy. I mean, it's an easy decision to make, and I don't, I haven't been through as many bond issues as my counterparts do, Mr. Renner. But I've been through several as a board member, but several prior to becoming a board member, and back to when we did Central. And I think this is probably the best process we've done of transparency, of getting it out and getting input that we've done, at least the ones I've been with. And I think that's a testament to this board, to this community, the task force, who did a tremendous job with what we gave them to work with, which was a lot of stuff, and coming up. One of the comments that was made tonight, which I will agree with totally, is we do compete with other schools. We compete with them athletically, we compete with them academically, and we compete with them aesthetically. And what I mean by that is facilities do matter. Kids learn, teachers teach, in an environment that's conducive to learning. They teach better. They learn more. And I think we do compete, hands down. We compete, private schools, charter schools, area schools, we do. We may not like that, it's a fact of life. And I think we make decisions to do that, and I think facilities is one of those things that you do, and I put my trust in things that's good for kids, and that's one of them. I mean, obviously, teacher quality, that kind of stuff is important, critical, most important, but you've got to have a plate. And I think upgrading, and as I said, we're not growing leaps and bounds in students, but what we've got, we need to take care of. Or we need to upgrade what we have so that we can keep the 25,000 kids we do have at a higher level. And I like the equity issue that came up several times, and I'm a big, that's something that we as a board, we as a district have to continue to address. It's why it's the whole equity issue of our kids, so that they have the same opportunities everybody else does. So, I'm obviously totally supportive of moving forward with that bond issue and accessibility. I haven't seen this much excitement through the task force of support before you even get started. Usually, you kind of got to generate that after you make the decision. Well, I feel more like we're being kind of encouraged and pushed, not pushed, but, you know, encouraged, hey, this is the right thing to do for a kid, and that's a nice feeling to have, that you've got some support. And so, yeah, I think it's a great opportunity for us to help our kids.
Thank you. Bruce?
I think it's important that, and I think you're right, I drew a few, we've done some of them well and some of them not so well. So, you know, I've been on both sides, and I'll agree, this probably has had more in-depth participation. It's had more in-depth, we've had a lot, we've had a number that have had participation, but it's been a slow participation, not near to the depth of the number of people, 35 to 30 people who have had that depth of knowledge. So, I think that was, that is really important. It's been important to me. But I think we have to focus only on phase one, because I think the message can be out there that, and I've been there, and you've heard people come to the podium and say, well, you said you were going to do, no, the name of a school was mentioned, and so therefore it became, you didn't follow through with that. The only thing we're voting on tonight is the 100 million and the projects that are listed up there, period, the end. That's all we're doing.
That's a really good point.
And I would be very surprised, like, I mean, this idea of keeping the task force updated as well as other people, but at four years from now, there's something else presented, I would be very, or exactly like the task force envision for years, because I think we learn something all the time. And if we're not learning, that's what we're about as a district, then we maybe would do better than we would do now predicting five years and maybe out. So, I think we just ought to almost take those off the plates, because these were identified as the most, the top priorities as far as physical plant needs or concern for learning. As a board, we know even those not considered, you know, so you've got a score of less than 70, you've got 69 or 71 where you weren't considered, you know, it's just like, folks, there wasn't that much difference. We know there at every facility that even maybe some of Fremont and Sherwood, if we could add something, we would do that. So, it's, we, I think it's right. We have to start someplace, and these are identified as the most crucial. And it is equity with physical facilities, Jerry. We're seeing that, you know, and so, do I agree 100%? Because I think the outside, sometimes there's a lot of people that judge what's happening inside by drive-by outside. We don't. But we're, there's a lot of people that, does the building look? But those of us that have taught in the Centrals and the older buildings know it really isn't. I mean, I like outlooks, I mean, how the 125 years old, but newness matters. How it looks to a really fully engaged with what's happening inside matters. So, the rest of what I, that's needs, what I like, maybe work on this thing, maybe, but they're going to have a brand-new chair, a brand-new outside that would be state-of-the-art for middle schools. That would be pretty appealing to me in a neighborhood also. So, I just think there are, this is a good, I'm putting out a good, this is a great beginning, and not to lose the fact that we got over 50 years ago. And I know getting the majority doesn't win here or national level or anything else, but usually, that's a pretty good indication that you've got support. If you've got the support of 50% of people, and they told us, ooh, the cost was a little too low of the cost, you were not specific enough. If you look at the plans of those things on there, I don't know how we can be much more specific about what we're going to, and they will have more specifics before they actually vote in April. So, I just think it's a great start, and to emphasize it's a start, but we'll focus on this start and what that's going to do, and we'll learn from that, and hopefully, future boards and administrations will learn, and the next one will be this one. So, I just think it's a great beginning, and I appreciate everybody that's spent the time, because it will affect all of us.
Thank you, Bruce. Denise or Tim? Who's next?
Okay. Oh, you know, first of all, I just want to say that as far as serving, being present for the task force meetings, it was a little bit, I could, if I was trying to make a comparison, I compared it a bit to being in the classroom, because it was a very diverse group of people that all came together and they had their own agendas, their own thoughts, and their own ideas, and their own school that they were very interested in, making sure that school received attention or was preserved. And then there was a period of time where it was a little frustrating, because, you know, they wanted to, one thing's to go, it was their way, but action became more available to them, and they got the facts, and more facts, and more facts, and they had their homework, and every week, they came back with a little more information. It was like, you know, when you provide the information for your students, and then at some point in time, they're asking the question, well, that's not what I heard, and that's not what we heard, and that's not what people were saying about, you know, the last bond or the information or what you were going to do. So, then you, then people start talking about this misinformation that was out there and what they had heard, and then they were beginning to put the pieces together that this is what our needs are, and this is why, these are our needs, and then going out and visiting buildings and actually seeing the needs. So, then the light bulbs started coming on, and I think that's teachers' most favorite part of teaching. The bulb comes on, and people are going, oh, this is what, this is really all about. This is what's really going on. And then you see that excitement building among people, and then they started thinking of this in terms of not just my school, my agenda, my building, it's my district and where my, are going, or where I went, or where my kids went, and really, really got into this, into the work of the entire committee, and that's when the consensus, you know, developed, and when all the schools were, when they each had an opportunity to provide their input on the schools. It was, it was really a fun, it was a very long, very long process and a lot of hard work, but it was really, for everyone, it was fun to watch those light bulbs come on. And then there was so much talk about, how can we stop some of the misinformation that was out there the last time? And how can we, how can we as a group go forward and make, are very, that we help people understand the facts that are associated with what our schools need and what we're all about? So, I mean, they owned it completely and want to continue to. So, that was a really fun thing about that committee and the committee work. But the board documents, on our resolution, it just struck me under section one, it says, "The Board of Education finds it necessary." And when I stopped with those first few words, and I thought, okay, that's me, that's us, we are elected by the voter district, and we find it necessary, why? And we find it necessary, and I think we've heard it tonight, number one, by our own personal visits that have been precipitated by teachers and principals requesting us to come out and look at their facilities. I don't know about the rest of you, but I just, from numerous folks, come out and look at this, Denise, come out and look at, look at some of the things, some of the things I already knew from my experience working in the district. But, you know, they've asked us to come out But, you know, they've asked us to come out and look and then we've had parent calls and conversations that have called and said, this is what my child's classroom looks like. This is what, you know, meaning and, you know, they're putting buckets out, trying to catch the rain even after they redid the roofs and the ceilings and whatever. So we're hearing that from our parents and then in our administration and our leadership are providing input to us and factual information of the need. And I guess in the most ever, we as a school board find it necessary, we listen to our community, our community voice, which has been huge this summer from so many people and it's reasonable, folks that are in touch with our district and our schools and our needs and what they want, that want for the future of the students in Springfield. And it is important what these facilities look like and what it feels like for the kids. So I feel like that I'm elected by taxpayers and I need to do my very best to listen and respond as a product to folks and, and I've been hearing from a lot of folks that we need to move forward on this and we've heard from a lot in our last couple of meetings that we need to move. So I'm going to be voting that we move forward with this.
Thank you Denise. Timothy?
What we've been reviewing is primarily the work done by the community Task Force. It's not the board's list. The administration prepared information for the community Task Force to evaluate. I think it would be absurd for the board to appoint a community Task Force, ask them to work for six months, crazy, go to all these meetings, read all these materials and then we ignore them. I've taken their task, the Task Force report and recommendation very, very seriously because of that. But it's also because of who was there. There are people in the buildings, are in the trenches and it's amazing, not just the passion that they have, which is what you'd expect, but the insight that they brought to this discussion. And it was interesting to see how the people who are not in the buildings, the community members, interacted or listened to the people who were. These were like, those were the experts that were listened to very carefully by the rest of the committee members. So I'm so grateful for the insight that the teachers and building leaders brought to the process. There were people, and I think, I think they were glad to be involved, to be inside on this, to be on this community Task Force. There were other people who came onto the community Task Force who were kind of surprised that they were on the community Task Force, that they normally aren't on the inside. And I think what they brought was amazing insight and they, they made courageous, speculative statements about what it's been like to be on the outside and now to be on the inside, at least in this moment. There were people who were invited to be on the inside, to be on this Task Force, who decided that they were better off to stay on the outside, to not be informed. And I think we ought to be ready that some of those very people are the ones who are going to oppose. And this is why we need to separate noise from signal. The signal comes from the Task Force. I was there, I believe in the work, kind of believe in the process that we, the process was difficult, it was hairy, but process matters in something like this if we're going to go to the community again and ask them to make this kind of sacrifice for the future of our community. I also believe like Jerry believes, that the physical, that place matters because if it didn't, my professional life would be a fraud. It would be a sham. But I'm not, I don't believe that because that's how I make my money. I make my money because I believe that. And that place, when Crystal, excuse me, Majority Leader Quay, Minority Leader Quay, yes, Minority Leader Quay said what she said about her child going to a wrestling meet in another school and coming home and talking about that. My heart softened, but it came awful close to being broken when I heard that. And we should be ashamed of that. Equity matters across the district in all things, including facilities. We do better because we know better. That's what we're doing now, happen in a few years because, as you said Bruce, we're in the business of learning. And if we're, if we're not learning, let's just shut her down now. But no, you're right, Alina. We, we, we have a responsibility to model the mission of our institution. And so I thank you for your, your words. Yeah, consider me a strong yes tonight and consider me a willing advocate going forward between now and April.
The other thing that I want to talk about before we talk about a motion is, you know, we've discussed two ways to handle this. And so I wonder if people have a sense or a viewpoint they want to share about which way, which preferred ballot language we propose. Anyone want to speak to that?
I'll start.
Thank you.
I'll quote Bruce from the last meeting. Eighteen, eighteen cents is eighteen cents regardless of how you cut it up. It's still eighteen cents. My preference, I think, has always been if you can break it up in small chunks and do it a little now, a little next time, it's not all at once. At least my experience from my other career was smaller increments usually are better. I think the community likes that better, to not swallow the whole thing at one time and phase it in. If you compare the two, I don't, you know, I think eighteen cents at one time is doable, but I do think it's more palatable and I think voters, we heard that from the survey we did when we did the first, the bond issue, you know, if it was broken up, there was probably a higher chance of it, they were more supportive of that in a smaller increment. I think we need to listen to that. So I, from my perspective, in my experience, I like the two, the phased in, the two nine cents over the two-year period versus. That impacts financially as far as bond issue proceeds to do that. So I just think that's, and I think it messages mine, it's eighteen cents. I mean, it's an eighteen cent bond issue, we're just not going to implement it in two parts, not at one time. So, but let's just do it in two parts rather than all at once.
I would agree with that. I mean, to the extent that it doesn't compromise our ability to do what we want and the community Task Force has told us we need to do, at that point, since there's, tactical question for me, and I would agree, that in it, I do think it is a bit more palatable to go nine-nine, even though after two years, the effect is the same. But I think it's reasonable and again, we've listened to the concerns about the size of the number. I think that nine-nine makes more sense.
Trying to watch who's ready to talk next.
I don't know that I'm going to add anything to what has already been said other than we are a board that makes data-driven decisions. And in the last couple of weeks, what Jerry was referring to, I went back and looked at our November 2016 voters, there was stronger support for a phase in regardless of what the cent value may be. And I think that my goal, and I believe our goal, is that the district gets what it needs and we balance that with the desires of our taxpayers.
Yeah.
So, we're looking at the phase-in approach and speaking with Carol, who has consulted the experts, that we get, we in the end get our desired dollar amount.
Anyone else want to speak to that or is that acceptable? Well, I'm going to ask, thank you, give me a minute there, sir. I rarely am the one who says, no, no, you're not done here.
This is a role reversal.
Stop chatting, I'm getting on with it. Would you modify Ms. Luton the proposed motion so that it speaks to the, makes it clear that's the one that we're going to vote on?
So, I consulted with bond counsel on this and the way the motion is crafted, we've currently posted both resolutions and dependent on the sentiment of the board, one will be removed so that your vote.
I want to effect that change before the vote.
The motion already. Would you read the motion?
The motion says that the board is, the resolution calling a special education on a general.
Special election, special election? So the resolution indicated below will be the nine.
So there's only one resolution.
You all, I'm looking at the paper version and I knew that there was something missing and I want to make sure it's right. So if, let me say, I think it is, do I have a motion that the board adopt the resolution calling a special election on a general obligation bond proposition in the district as indicated below?
I would like to make that motion, I have a question.
I am delighted, thank you Denise. And do I have a second?
Second.
And Tim makes the second and now we can all vote. And that is unanimous vote. It's very exciting, here we go.
Now the work starts.
And that's fine, I think we're all ready to put our noses to the grindstone and be out there. I will attach my name to that. Fine, let's go.
We can do it.
I think we can. We're going to move on to 10.05 Architectural Services. Dr. Travis Shaw is here, good evening.
Well, what I have to go over is a lot less dramatic than what you've been discussing, but it all fits together. So after your presentation that Carol gave, particularly around the sequencing chart of projects and also in preparation for what you all just approved, we've been negotiating fees for architectural services to, for the initial projects, it would be on the 2019 April. Those fees were negotiated with Buxton Cubic Dodd, Dake Wells, the team of H Design, Hollis Miller, and the new team that we brought on to assist with the work and that's Paragon SAP. The negotiated fees are as follows, for any new school construction, the total hard construction cost, for a renovated school construction project, it would be seven percent of total hard construction cost and for the secure entrance construction projects, it would be ten percent of the total hard construction cost. And these would be funded by bond funds, including the 2013 questions that I can answer.
The leftover fund.
The leftover funds for 2013, yes.
They're wiped out or you are clear?
Certainly won't take us all the way through, but it'll get us moving on the process for those initial projects, including the thirty-one secure entrances.
I can speak to these fees of six, seven and ten, is that these are very reasonable. Six percent is kind of that starting point for a new building and there is six percent. It's, it's, the truth is, is that all architects sell is their time. We don't want to pay them more than is necessary, but we want to pay them a reasonable fee that we've got their attention, that they'll pay attention to the details, that they'll, they'll show up at meetings and be fully present, that when they get back to the office, that they'll be thinking and trying to solve problems wisely and that does that. The seven percent for renovation simply recognizes several things, is that if it's a hard cost, a renovation costs less because you, the building is there. But in some ways, it creates more work because you have to understand the building and deal with it sensitively in order to deliver value. So the extra fee is there. And then ten percent for the secure entrances, that may sound like, you know, a dime on the dollar, that is pretty significant. But that's because these are projects, these are, these are those seven percent, but they're in very small increments. And still, each is a project and every project has certain built-in costs, no matter if it's a hundred million dollar project or fifty thousand dollar project. That's why architects don't do, just pay money to do these kind of things. And we want to pay our architects well enough that they can do their job well for us and we can leverage their capabilities against a much larger construction cost, much larger construction cost. But at the same time, we don't want to be suckers. I think these are, these are reasonable that we go forward with that.
Well, in light of that.
Thank you for speaking to that, with your expertise.
Is there a motion that the board approve the fee commitments for architectural services as presented?
So moved.
Tim and a second?
Second.
Charles? And that passes unanimously. We had no comments this evening, thank you. Any additional, I should say. Okay, we're going to do our reports from the administration, 12.01, we'll start with Dr. Jungman.
I'll try to keep it brief and just run through the team, so Stephen?
We're looking forward to engagement with all of our, advisory council, which will have represented students of all five high schools, that will be this Thursday, the 29th. Our teacher open forum and our parent advisory council, which includes teachers and parents from all of our feeder patterns, will be next week on December the 3rd. And then our senior open forum, the week after that. So looking forward to the continued engagement we have, those, the first ones that we had this year were well-attended and we had great feedback and look forward to that continuing. We've had some great media coverage just over the last week or two around certain issues I wanted to make you aware of. KY3, Color 10 and the News Leader covered the Academy of Exploration yesterday, their students are able to see the Roxy up close and those will be taken throughout our elementary schools and so other students within SPS will be able to see that as well. And interestingly enough, it occurred during a simultaneous broadcast of NASA preparing to land on Mars.
I saw that.
So I think our, I think our students were wowed by that. And I am thrilled that Hillcrest's media program received its 14th Broadcast Pacemaker Award and that recognizes the HTV magazine. So I think it's important that we acknowledge the outstanding communicators and student journalists that we have within our system and so we're very proud of the Hillcrest team. That will close this Friday and I believe that concludes my updates, thank you.
Well, we are gearing up for hiring season and so our first step in that process is gauging, you know, who, how many folks are we going to have retiring or residing in the upcoming year. And so yesterday, we, we sent, this will be our fourth year of the early notice incentive program for both resignations and retirements. And wanted to just share that with you and let you know that our first deadline is January 4th and in order to be eligible for that one thousand dollar incentive, we need to know from our teachers and so it's site, teachers and administrators would be eligible for a one thousand dollar incentive. Then February 1 is our seven hundred and fifty dollar deadline and then March 1 is our five hundred dollar early notification deadline. Knowing early allows us to then begin to prepare and hire earlier as we continue to try and move that we have access to the fullest market when it comes to hiring time. And so as you have opportunity, please share that with teachers as well.
Just a couple of quick reports. One, as you remember, we trained everyone in the Alice workshop earlier in the year. We're now moving into mental health awareness, seven sites have completed that and we have 20 more scheduled for December. We've also completed the first round of flu shots at every school and we have administered 3,540 of those flu shots. And exciting to know that our adults are also receiving that, so we're almost 1,800. So like the staff is going to be healthier in this flu season as it approaches. A couple of quick things, celebrations, really, we had our SPS Connect cohort two year. A couple of quick things, celebrations, really, we had our SPS Connect Cohort 2 yesterday, kind of a showcase of events. It's kind of our, our teacher leadership track and then kind of displaying their personalized learning projects. They were faster, so I have special thanks to Allison and Martha and Kelly from Curriculum and Learning Support, Blended Learning, who made that happen. Also wanted to just give a shout out to Central High School Wind Ensemble. I don't know if you know, but they've been selected to perform at the Missouri Music Educator Association in Tanter. That's a very big deal in their world. And then recently Kickapoo was selected to perform the, at the Missouri State Lesbian Society. They only pick one musical a year and it was Kickapoo High School. So, that's a great honor for them and we're very excited to celebrate. And then lastly, just recently, we had our SPS First All District Math Competition for 40 kids participating. Just amazing things happening in the school district in the Irish Village.
So, funny thing, in the finance world, tonight, we received closure on the 2017, 2018 school year through the acceptance of the, in the 2018, 2019 school year or fiscal year. And we've already initiated the budget process for the 2019, 2020 school year with our administrative team, so.
So, what's funny about that?
It's, you know, you have to find humor in interesting places. Yeah. So, we'll be in that budget presentation process with you in the upcoming months, so be ready for that. And we are working behind the scenes to make that happen.
I think that, I'm sure you saw the media, but it's good to have a commissioner of the state of Missouri. Interesting year, to say the least, and we'll kind of leave it at that. And ready to get back on the horse. And I think the department is ready to move forward with the OCS work as well as other projects that have kind of been stalled a bit through this transition time. So, we're excited and continuing to meet with other legislators and representatives around some of the governor's priorities on workforce development. That's a high priority issue for him and finding ways to partner with K-12. And we are so fortunate and blessed to have a governor that's fully engaged with us in that conversation. And that kind of overlaps with legislative update and we'll be done.
Cool. Thank you. I want to thank you all because it's time now for any board comments or Board of Education discussion and I'm happy to hear from anyone again, but I want to thank you all for the really thoughtful comments that you made. Anything else that you wish to share?
Just one thing, Mike, as you mentioned, it's been pretty much a passion since John's come here that we've talked about activities and athletic expansion in middle schools because I thought we were so far behind. I see Twitter as my social thing, not Facebook or other, but I, I do that. And then when I see district band and orchestra and district choir for middle school kids, a math competition, that, that was huge as each school would recognize each other. Then we see, I mean, there were other just activities that are happening all the time and kids are winning medals and they're smiling and they're being recognized. And then our athletics are actually have made the step towards competing with like schools. I mean, based on their size and everything, it's not just head to head, it's actually some of them going out and competing and winning and losing and keeping score. And we're, you know, and we're, we're starting to do that, so we're just not always, we're Springfield Public Schools. And I think it's good, all of a sudden in high school, you've got to do that. And now we're starting to do that in a number of areas. So, I think that will pay off. I, I think it just has, just based on seeing the kids faces. I see them. And I just think that gives them, that will, they will come back and be a more active part of the academic process. But there are things they learn in these other activities that they may not learn in academics that are skills that will, starting, it's doing what a lot of people have taken a part of and may start happening is that we're becoming a much more well-rounded district than you can't just start at a high school level. And we're, and you are moving it down. I just think that's so important. So, I'm, I'm just, I'm really pleased with that, of what we're doing in that area. And there's a lot of hard work by a lot of people that, and I know they get to see the kids in person, so the light bulb gets seen. I just expect that.
Thank you. Just, just real quick, I know I thanked Tim and Denise for serving on the task force, but I wasn't here when the task force presented, so I just publicly want to thank Carol and Travis for their work the entire summer. All do, really, whatever the task force needed. You all were, were pulling that together. And when I met with different task force members, they would just describe how brilliant you were and how you really helped educate them on, you know, the basic, so I just want to publicly thank you all for the additional hours that went in to that work. And thank you guys.
Just, just one last thing. Mike mentioned the Kickapoo production of Into the Woods will be sort of growing up, up the chain. But I did my annual, just extraordinary stuff. I mean, beyond Into the Woods, Blood Brothers over at Central and Parkview Seussical, which is a show I don't like, but it was extraordinary. And Blue Dale's Tuck, Tuck Everlasting, which is, I'm not the target demographic for that, I get, but it was just extraordinary. It is extraordinary what's going on in the performing arts. So, the Kennedy Center ought to be very proud that they've got us doing our thing.
Anyone else? I can tell you that the swim meet is over. I just, I just got a call, so I just wanted to make sure that she was up. So, we are now going to mention that the upcoming meetings include legislative priorities reception Tuesday, December 11th. It's a little scary to think of that we're in that part of, 4:00 PM at the Campbell Early Childhood Center, which is neat because we can show off how proud we are of that. And the December combined meeting as well, plus Delta statements, feel free to provide those. And we will be going into executive session this evening. So, may I have a motion that the board meet in executive session to discuss legal real estate and personnel matters as provided in sections 610.021 subsections 1 to Missouri. Elena, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles, and please vote. Thank you all. Those of you who lasted till the end, thank you for being here with us.